Good morning and welcome to the July 25, 2023 Regular Brevard County Commission Meeting. Do I have Pastor Elder Osborne here? Okay, then we're going to go ahead and move forward. We have a quorum, someone called the meeting to order. And...
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, can I have a motion to approve the minutes from May 23? Motion by Commissioner Steele, second by Commissioner Tabia. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, passes 5-0. We have a very short agenda today. Consent agenda, Commissioners, do you have anything you'd like to have polled? Have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion approved.
Motion by Commissioner Tabia.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Goodson. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, passes 5-0. We are moving into public hearings, item G1.
Good morning Commissioners. Then before you use our final public hearing for our annual action plan that begins October 1st, this outlines what the plans are for the county CBG funds as well as the home consortium funds that we share with the four major cities. Excuse me, Palm Bay, Melbourne, Cocoa and Titusville.
Thank you, sir, for all your work. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Commissioner Tabia.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Felton. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, passes 5-0. County Manager is assured, sir? Or, oh, there's Ms. Hayes.
For Commissioners, in this agenda item, staff's requesting that the board set the FY 2023-24 proposed mileage rates. The agenda attachment provides the board with the details on 25 individual taxing districts that the board has, is the taxing authority over, 20 of which are operating and five are voter-approved debt. All mileage rates have been established within the Brevard County Charter cap limitations. Property values increased by approximately 13% this year, so consistent with adverbal revenue growth limitation of 3%. That's set forth in the charter. All proposed mileage rates have been decreased from the current year rates. The aggregate proposed mileage rate represents a 6.82% decrease from the fiscal year 2022-23, current aggregate rate of 4.9777. Additionally, the aggregate proposed mileage rate of 4.6383 is equal to the aggregate rollback rate. Therefore, in accordance with Florida state statutes, the final budget hearing will not be advertised as a tax increase under this proposal. Jill and I are available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for all the work you both do and thank you for tweaking all the budgets this year. Commissioners? Motion by Commissioner Goodson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Steele. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, passes 5-0. Thank you. We're moving now into new business and we have item I1.
Good morning Commissioners. I1 is a contract for sale and purchase from PMJLLC for 5041 Martin Lane, West Melbourne as part of an advanced acquisition for the Hollywood Boulevard widening project in District 3 in the amount of $200,000 plus $695.25 for the appraisal. There are no issues.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Tabia, sir, District 3.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I certainly would support this, but this was a bigger project long-term for Dr. Zonka, I always saw, looking for the necessity of widening Hollywood Boulevard. So you have one current and one former Commissioner, I think, that would be strongly in favor of this.
Okay, so would you like to make a motion, sir?
Motion approved, Madam Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Tabia.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Steele. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, passes 5-0. Item I2.
I2 is a contract for sale and purchase from Chase Realty LLC for Save Our Indian River Lagoon, Zone D, Septic to Sewer Conversion Project. It's in District 4. It is for a vacuum pump station, vacuum collection system and force main for the purpose of the Septic to Sewer Conversion, and it is for the appraised value of $100,000. There are no issues.
Commissioner Felton.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Felton. Second by Commissioner Tabia. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, passes 5-0. We are moving to board reports. County Manager.
I have no report.
Thank you, sir. County Attorney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to report that longtime Assistant County Attorney Christie Scherek, who has been with the county now for almost six years and who dutifully served as your interim county attorney during a period of transition and some turmoil last summer and did a great job of it, I believe, has announced her retirement. Unfortunately, she's going to be retiring from our office. We wish her all the best. She couldn't be here today, but I wanted to let the board know her final day is going to be Friday, August 4, so before your next meeting. So if you have the chance, I'm sure she would love to give you her regards. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. She did a bang-up job while we were waiting on you and she's just a great attorney and I know she'll do great wherever she goes and very mature and very smart. So we're going to greatly have a void there. So thank you if you're listening, ma'am. Appreciate you. Commissioner Goodson, sir.
Yes, ma'am, I have, I have one report. As you have staff, these are the things you do that you don't necessarily like to do, but I'd like to wish Susan Smith, Susan, stand up so everybody can see you, a happy birthday and thank you for being nice.
You're so nice. Commissioner Felton.
Well, I'd like to wish Commissioner Steele a happy birthday. I believe it's tomorrow, isn't it? Stand up.
It's tomorrow. Do I have to stand up?
Yeah.
If I knew I would have gotten this old, I'd have taken much better care of myself.
You've done well. Oh, okay, I'm going to go first, Commissioner Tabia, so I can turn it over to you to do vice-face chair. Quick question, sir. I know we're getting ready to put all the budgets together. Have you gotten all the data you needed that you're requesting for budget as far as constitutions? Are you all good with that?
Madam Chair.
I have a request out, but want to give a little more time to, I think there's plenty of time as I laid out the calendar of events. So hopefully we'll get that in the next couple of weeks here. And my request was that the response come to all offices. So hopefully we'll have that and we can, when we get that data, we can decide or decide to move forward with a little more data than what we currently have.
Okay, I was just hoping to get it. So did you get all the stuff you wanted from the other constitutions, travel and everything that you requested?
Yes, we got, we got those, two offices got those to us extremely quickly and diligently and hopefully, you know, that continues in the future.
Okay, sir. Just wanted to check here so that we didn't have any kind of hitch on the budget. All right, Commissioner Tabia, I'm going to turn it over to you and you can do your board report and then your vice-face chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today is National Health and Happiness with Hypnosis Day. So our office had some fun here with, let's go to the next slide here. These were AI-generated pictures. This is how we have fun in the office. So if you type in health and happiness with hypnosis day, I'm not sure what that is on the left. I don't know if that's a person or a dog, but that's what AI thinks about hypnosis. So the useless Florida fact of the day, Bay Shore Boulevard of Tampa is the longest continual sidewalk in the U.S. at 4.5 miles in length. I guess there's a lot going on in Tampa because this day in Florida history, in 1884, the Tampa Bay Times, formerly the St. Petersburg Times, was first published under the name West Hillsborough Times. And certainly, last but not least, the employee recognition, recognition would be Elaine Humphrey. And she has the title of Secretary in Solid Waste Department. And as an aside, let me tell you how important the administrative assistants and the secretaries are. Constituents, generally this is their first point of contact with any of the department or offices. So these folks are instrumental, not only here, but in our, in our offices, and I really appreciate the sunny disposition that, that all these folks do. Elaine's been with the county six and a half years and her supervisor said Elaine always provides a happy face and top-quality service to the department. Elaine loves mountains, yard sales, thrift stores, baking and animals, especially her dog Charlie, the best dog in all the land. Elaine, you probably don't hear it enough, but thank you for all you do for your department and all you do for us up here. And Madam Chair, that would be my board report and I'd like to switch it. Can I steal the gavel and I'll switch over to public comment? And as promised, Mr. Tovey, you are first. Sure. Mr. Tovey, hold on one second. I apologize. I skipped over Commissioner Steele. So board report, Commissioner Steele.
Thank you very much. It's quite interesting, the last couple of weeks, being able to get caught up with all of the wonderful things these Commissioners have done, but probably the most notable and interesting thing that came about during these meetings was meeting with TDC. And I would like to ask the Commissioners for support and directing staff to place an item on the upcoming agenda, that I would like them to prepare a report for options using TDC money and revenues for lifeguard services. We spent a lot of time with Morris in regards to this and Peter Cranis in regards to this. We think we've got a venue to be able to do it and I would like to ask the board support and directing staff to provide us a report that we can move forward with.
Commissioner Tabia, pushing my light.
Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am. I, Chairman.
I am highly in favor of that. Thank you for bringing this up and it's good to know that we're going to have the support to do this. And as far as tourism goes, if we have people not surviving at our beaches, it's not a good thing. So I appreciate it, sir. Commissioner Tabia recently put a lot of county funds in trying to get these things handled right now, so I think that's a very good proposition. Thank you, sir.
I, I imagine we're probably going to want a motion on this. Let me ask a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
I guess I'm the chair, so I don't have to punt over if that's okay. Are we talking county beaches or are we talking county and municipal beaches?
We're talking both. We're talking whatever, we're talking both.
Okay. There was just some discussion up here and I believe Commissioner Goodson mentioned it, had some reservations and I thought it was a good idea. I don't know if those are still there. I'd like to hear Commissioner Goodson's thoughts on the municipalities that were charging for parking. Is that reservation still there or would this trump, trump that?
Are you asking me or him?
No.
My comments would be mine still stands where they should pay some of the cost.
Okay, so I have that reservation too. I just, I just, yeah, I just want to make sure that's still there before we ask staff to, to, to move forward on something. I don't want to spend any time on that if there's not, if there's not some side on that. So.
Yeah, this would be an addition to those things because what, what I think would happen is once staff gave us the report, we would be able to determine where those, where those lifeguard stands would go and whether or not we can properly use the TDC funds. I understand your, your concerns and I agree with those concerns, but this is an opportunity for us to be able to get in lifeguards with TDC money.
Okay. The next point on this would be, as this is out of TDC, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't sit on TDC, I don't show up to that all that much. So I'd like to punt over to the chair. Has the TDC discussed the possibility of using those funds and what's the thought of getting the TDC recommendation on something that would directly impact them before it was brought to us?
I don't believe there's been a lot of discussions, sir, on that yet. I do know Mr. Cranis is bringing a marketing program where he's putting in as far as the need for lifeguards out of the sum of the funds. I know we talked about that. I, before we start going here, I, County Attorney, is it all right? I started doing a spreadsheet with, with certain parks and stuff that would be able to move over to TDC that would undo a whole lot of fun. So if that's okay, sir, I'd like to go ahead and send out, send out some of my work to the Commission. I'll send it to you and you can send it to the rest of them. Ms. Adrian made nice colors on it with charts too, so I have that about ready. So I'll send that out as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Tabia. I think that's a very good question. One of the things that I did do when Peter Cranis was there is I looked him straight in the eye and I said to Peter, I said, "Peter, I want to know right now, before I move forward with this, are you going to recommend the TDC use of monies for lifeguards?" And I said, "If you are, I will move this forward. If you're not, I will not." Peter Cranis said, "Mr. Steele, I will in fact support this and I will tell the board that I'm going to support it."
Yes, sir, and I believe the board's going to support it as well, if that helps.
Yeah.
Just because they sit on it, so they're great people.
Peter here?
I don't, I don't want, I think that would be a good process, but they should consider possibility, one, that TDT funds lifeguards in unincorporated Brevard. And then the second option, where it funds both unincorporated Brevard and the municipalities, or to what extent it subsidizes the municipalities, so.
I would be happy with the unincorporated areas.
Because I, I think, you know, I, there's been this question of whether TDT can be used to fund lifeguards. So, you know, we could answer that question in the same meeting, but I think that, you know, it would be easier for the board to start with, well, let's, let's talk about TDT funding unincorporated Brevard, then you have the question of the municipality. So I, I think that would be a good strategy.
Commissioner Tabia, may I?
Absolutely.
We, we started down this path a while ago because actually at one time we were trying to use the cultural funds. And I believe that Mr. Richardson did come to the determination that there was a path to use some of these funds for lifeguards. So then trying to figure out which funds to use, again, I'm going to send this out to you, but right now the county has to maintain a lot of the parks which are eligible to be used for the tourist development funds. So I'll send out these charts to you because I went through the county parks and the amount of money that could possibly be moved over to the TDT funds. And then it would free up these funds for lifeguards because the county just footed a big bill right now to get the safety on the beaches as we move forward and trying to figure it out for the next budget cycle. So that's all I wanted to mention, but thank you for bringing this up and you definitely can have my support on it, even on the TDC level, it will have my support as well.
Okay. I'm going to try to put this as, as delicately as possible, Mr. Cranis, but I imagine there was probably a miscommunication. Would you be in favor, just to be clear, would you be in favor of this if your board or this board decided to go in that direction? Or were you referring to this as, in your personal capacity as, as Mr. Cranis?
Well, I work for Frank and I work for the board, so I would support whatever direction as long as the county attorney's office finds a path, I'm behind that.
Okay, but just to be clear, once the approval was by either the TD, the TDT or TDC board or this board, is that correct?
Correct, absolutely.
Okay. Mr. Steele, I think it, I think it's a good idea. I think we need to, you know, look at all our options and I certainly don't want to shortchange that. I think before you got here, a couple of us spoke with some concerns about some municipalities that were charging for parking and yet not remitting any of that for the services of lifeguards. If you want to reexamine that, absolutely, but right now I'd be a no on going forward with this, even though I've been informed by the county attorney that there is a path. What this board made a determination about two, two months ago is we asked the county manager and the county attorney to meet with the municipalities and get some buy-in so they would cover the cost of the lifeguards on the municipal beaches. So by all of a sudden saying that the TDT will cover this, we're basically cutting them off at the knees and negotiating power because now these municipalities are saying, well, why do I need to do that if there's another source here? So, but I don't want to close the door on this because the opinion of the board may have changed. So my, my suggestion, it may be voted down on this, I'm more than willing to entertain a motion. My mind could be changed, but I would need to hear from the, the TDC first if that was the direction. So you're welcome to make your motion, whether to bring that back to us. My suggestion would be to the TDC, but it's completely up to you to, to make that motion. I just want to give you as much foresight where I will be. And Commissioner Goodson was pretty clear that his opinion hadn't changed on that one. And, you know, so I wanted to give you all that information before you made a motion and you're welcome to do whatever you want, sir.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. I was very well aware of what was going on with the cities and counties and I would be flexible in regards to eliminating that from, from this motion. So I think that we, the motion would be that, that we would move forward, the staff report to use TDC funds in unincorporated areas of Brevard County. And, and, and I think there's an avenue there. I've spent a lot of time with Morris in regards to this. I think this is one of the most highly sought-after things that this county needs. Tourism dies with drownings. We are going to need to get more money for that and, and I just firmly believe that we can work through the process. So the staff report would give us recommendations of what they felt was important and all I'm trying to do is get staff to give us their report on whether or not the avenue works and what it is that they would recommend that we do. If we need to eliminate cities and municipalities, I got it. No problem.
Okay, so make, say the motion one more time. I'm sorry, so we have.
I move that we move forward with having staff give us a report in regards to being able to use TDC funds for lifeguards for the unincorporated areas.
Thank you. I'll, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I'll second that one. Oh, darn it. Any comments before we go forward? Yes.
Just for clarity, you say staff, you mean TDC? It's going to, it's going to start there? This will go before TDC? Or comes to us and then we can send it to TDC?
I would prefer that staff give us the report and then we send it to TDC.
Okay, we have a motion and a second and I've kind of tipped my hand where I am on this one, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Commissioner Steele, on that one and sorry, sorry for skipping you. And Mr. Tovey, you're up.
Charles Tovey, 2555 Roberts Road. I expect it. 20 years of hell, I expect it. Mr. Tabia, I apologize for snapping at you. I have a defensive reaction I can't control all the time and you can let any woman go in front of me, you want to, and thank you for letting, I forget her name, officer. Anyways, it's about public comment and I go to meetings early so I don't waste my time because I don't, I can't afford what the rest of the world has to spend. But I go to public meetings, I fill out my card, I'm the on the first one there, hours go by while I sit there and wait in pain, and that's the other reason why I'm in a bad mood, because I'm in pain all the time from the negligent driver running me over the day I was going to file on the Fifth District Court of Appeal hearings from this issue. And it's all stemming from the issue of public comment. And I want to thank Commissioner Smith for the 100 acres, and you notice that's full already, and that should be telling Brevard County that we need more areas. And my area is a DIRA, designated environmental recharger, and that's what I do. And I, I want to expound on everything, because a lot of people make judgment, quick judgments, irrational or whatever, but they don't understand the full picture. So I try and explain where my position is and what I do, and it takes so long and arguments and delays and all kinds of other things. But I love you, Commissioner Tobia, and I thank you for your work on the CRAs and Commissioner Smith for his 100 acres. Good morning, everybody. I'm not against you or anybody. Thank you and I love you. We're going to, I got three minutes. I come up here, I got three minutes, and with all the other distractions before I speak, I'm very nervous, and anybody should be nervous coming up here, and I get, get nervous. Anyways, Eels Land. It was, and this is what I do, why, because I don't want Rockledge to end up like Palm Shores, and Palm Shores used to be Eels Land, and Virginia Barker used to be the head of Eels, and she's with the mayor and Commissioner Bowlin Lewis. I could spend hours of this and no one would even understand it then either, but I appreciate your time in allowing me to come and speak at public comment, and I don't mind being last.
Thank you, Mr. Tovey. You are, you are always welcome here. Thank you for participating.
Right, and still got three seconds. Thank you and have a nice day. I'm out of time.
Mr. Avila.
Yes, sir. Thank you for hearing me. My name is David Avila. I reside at 275 North Burnett Road, Cocoa, Florida, and I have been dealing with harassment and reckless behavior from Waste Management Cocoa Hauling to the point where I started a Facebook page, Waste Management Cocoa Hauling Complaints. And you can go there and you can see things like this here. That's what I deal with six times a day, sometimes more, and I also have videos. I wear this here as I'm live streaming today, cutting my grass hundreds of feet away from the road, and they're doing this to me, not to, to warn me, not to, just to bother me. I also have recordings of the police officer accompanying me there and then writing me a trespass warning for trespassing, because I'm complaining about them beeping the horns for no legitimate reason. Eighty to ninety decibel air horns on commercial trucks should not be beeped in front of somebody's residence for any ill will or ill intent. I've reached out to every agency I could think of, because they are a private entity, there's no accountability or transparency, there's nobody who will take accountability. I've got the, even this morning, videos of one of the black Dodge Chargers speeding down the road, and pictures of the tag and the car placed in your parking lot. So there's no denying that these people are breaking the law and they're getting paid to do it by, I don't know if it's tax dollars, I'm not up to date with how they're getting paid, but we're paying them to harass people. This, to me, it, it just doesn't stand. So I'm here today to let you guys know, make you guys aware, it needs to stop. Law enforcement has written me a trespass warning. I have no recourse. I have nothing I can do except for, hey, look, this is going on. I have videos. I have installed over sixteen cameras to catch them, audio and video. I walk around now in my front yard and around my neighborhood with a body camera, a phone that I converted to a body camera, and I catch numerous infractions from their employees on and off duty, following me, tailgating, revving their motor, beeping their horns in their personal vehicles, and it's just because I'm the person who speaks up and I speak my mind. And that's all I'm trying to do here today. I want you guys to take notice, give me whatever you guys, as all you, you know more than me, what can I do? Law enforcement doesn't have any solutions, so what can we do, you know? And that's where I, that's what I have. And if anybody feels free, Facebook, everything's public, there's numerous videos, and I'm not the only one. Other peoples have had to move out of the neighborhood because of this. It clearly states it, and, you know, you can read their statements, that they had a miscarriage or complications to their pregnancy because they were harassing them like they are to me, but it just, it just needs to stop. That's where I'm at. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Avila. Ms. Delaney.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having us here to speak today. I am speaking today about something that I've heard through the, through different meetings that I've been to, that there's a possibility of incorporating Merritt Island, and this is very concerning to me, mostly because I feel like since this has been being talked about since November, and most of the public has no idea that this is going on, being from a place where I also live in unincorporated Brevard, the idea that the commission would be speaking about this without making it very clear to the public that this is an option is very troubling, and I hope that more transparency is given to the public about this. There's a lot of downsides to this, including property taxes going up, you know, more funding that needed for police and fire and infrastructure as far as roads and everything else that goes into incorporating a city. So, thank you so much.
Yeah, sure. Ms. Delaney, have you, have you seen the, I understand the report just got finalized. Have you seen a copy of that?
No.
I haven't either, but I understand it just became available. If you contact my office, I will be more than willing to get you a copy of that. There is a whole, long procedure, which, again, I'll be more than willing to get you. The county attorney did a very good job on a white paper. The short of this is, this would have to go up to the legislature. The legislature would then determine whether or not this was appropriate. At that point, the voters would have a say on it, but right now, all there is is a report, and I would like to get, if you're interested, I certainly would be more than willing to get you that. I understand that I can get you that as early as today, if you're more than interested.
Okay.
I haven't read it, but it'll be in your hands if you want it.
How much funding has been used to do all of this prior to it getting to the people?
I can get you that number. I don't know offhand, and I don't want to cite, I don't want to give you a, I don't want to give you a bad number, but I can get you that as well. Chair, and then Commissioner Steele.
Yes, ma'am. I believe some of this, Commissioner Goodson, it's his district, and so, you know, if somebody's open to an idea of something, if we can help, we always will. But, you know, you got to understand, even for this to happen, the county will lose a lot of funds, so.
Of course.
It's not like it's, there's a lot of bad information going on out there. You can't believe everything you read. I'm just telling you right now, I've seen some pretty incredible things, but this would directly affect Commissioner Goodson, so, you know, he's in contact with all of you guys. But Commissioner Tobia about said everything I was thinking. This will go to the vote to the people, and as of right now, I don't think the county commission has a, a whole lot with this right now, but.
Commissioner Steele, then Commissioner Goodson.
I yield to Commissioner Goodson.
Thank you, thank you, sir. There was forty, forty thousand dollars appropriated by the board for a study. That's all that we have given those people, if I remember the number correctly. Now, that being said, everything they've said is true. Still, it's got to go to the people. Yes, you will get the tax dollars, or the county might lose tax dollars, I don't know the number at this time, but you will have to fund things as a city, fire, police, infrastructure, roads, bridges, all of that. Now, that being said, it still has to go to legislators after the vote for approval. Is that correct, John? That's correct.
I'm pretty sure it's the other, I think it's the other way.
The vote comes first.
It would go to the legislature. The legislature would determine through special act whether or not then it goes to.
Now, if you know anything about Tallahassee, that's where your fight should be.
And.
Not here. You've got two legislators, Randy Fine, Tyler Saroye. Have you spoke to them?
Uh, we're in communications.
You are, so, okay. They're either for it or against it. I don't know, I don't care. I don't live in the district. I live in Rockledge. I can't even vote. I have told people, I don't care. Vote, yes or no? Also, the comment was made by me that hurry up and get it done. That was in reference to the fact those people who are implying they want to be a city need to have it on the ballot of 2024. Hurry up and get it done, is what I said. And there is no collusion, if you look at the Myra, in my personal opinion. Now, you can accuse everybody of anything you wish, proving it's a whole different world. A developer is on the Myra board. You might call this person a developer, Andy Barber. He used to build houses. He's the most honest person I know in the building trade on Merritt Island. So accusations against Myra are against the board. They're going to turn out the report, yes, good, bad, and different, but you still have a yes and no vote.
Thank you, sir.
And you can call my office, too, and we'll get you anything we wish.
I hope you didn't take.
What you read in the paper is not necessarily true.
I hope you didn't take what I said to offense. I wasn't trying to insinuate anything. I, you know, more transparency is always great.
I enjoy being accused of everything. My wife does it, why shouldn't you?
Yeah, I'd like to add just. Commissioner Felton.
Thank you, Chair.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Just about the process, before the referendum, long before that, the Brevard Legislative Delegation has to take that up at their delegation meeting. And my understanding is, they, if they're okay with it, and that's a big if, they can move it forward as a local bill, and then it'll be referred to committee, and it has to go through the committee process, and as Representative Commissioner Goodson alluded to, it's, it's, there's a, there's quite a process there. But I would encourage you and everybody whose interest in this to go to the legislative delegation meeting and speak to legislators about it, specifically because it doesn't come back to this board for a vote.
Exactly.
It's, that's, that's actually where the, the legislative process is going to start. And I don't know the date of the legislative delegation meeting, but it's November, December, somewhere in there, anyways. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Delaney. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
When you asked about the date, I was just going to say that the, the report has to be submitted to the legislature by the first Monday in September, which was why, why the timeline for the report was established, the way that it was.
And Ms. Delaney, we will get you that white paper. The county attorney did a very good job out laying out the steps that, that are required. Carrie Takis.
I'm here to pretty much echo her concerns. I live on Merritt Island. My family chose to settle there when my husband retired from the service, because it's a small town. It's great, we love it. We do not want to be incorporated. Most of my neighbors don't want to. Our biggest concern is that, from what we're reading, and I understand there's, you know, fallacies and, we need transparency, so we understand, because what I'm reading online is not what people want, and then we come here and you're telling us, well, that's not true. If there was a way you could maybe get the information out to us so we understand exactly what's going on, my concerns are higher taxes. Right now, to evacuate Merritt Island, I believe it's around fifty-six or fifty-seven hours, and adding more people to that will create, you know, a bigger problem, infrastructure overwhelming, all of that. I, I just, I would hope, I would love that report that you said you would get Ms. Delaney, too. In the future, I'm just hoping that we're invited to the table bef, from what I understand, this all started in November and it's July, and we're just hearing about it now, so maybe there's a better way to get the information out to the people so that we're kind of on the same page. That would be great. Thank you.
Ms. Takis, if you give me an hour.
Yeah.
To drive back, you want both, and we'll do the same for Ms. Delaney.
Yes.
We'll get you both the report, which just landed. We, we, it took a while to, we didn't do this report. We put it out for RFP, got the report back just now.
No, and I understand that.
But I want to get that in your hands before, you can have it in an hour.
Yes, yeah.
And also the other one, and then we'll rely on folks like you to let, let, you know, if you're for it or if you're against it, I'll tell you right now, and I don't know where anyone else is, I'm not going to pick up the phone to talk to the legislative delegation. They're more than welcome to call me, and Tyler, or Representative Saroye has, and I gave him the information, and he asked me where I was, and I said, this is your, this, this is your determination, not, not mine. It's completely out of my hands.
And I don't, I don't want you guys to think we're coming at you like aggressively or anything. We're confused by the conflicting information, and just talking with my fellow neighbors and residents, it, we need more transparency so we understand what's going on, because there's a lot of misinformation.
That'll start in an hour when you get the report from my office, as well as the steps that have to go through, and if there are any questions, you're more than welcome to pick up the phone and ask us or, or, or anyone.
Thank you.
So thank you for showing up.
Commissioner Tobia, I'm just.
Sorry. Sorry, Commissioner Goodson.
I heard you speak of evacuations.
Yes.
Off the, off the barrier islands, right?
Mm-hmm.
Do you know who controls the routes that you will take?
The county, I would assume.
No. Five twenty-eight state, five twenty state.
Okay.
I need a causeway state. So if you want an extra lane on those roads to evacuate, you need to start talking to the Long Term Plan of Transportation, State of Florida, but as long as you understand, to get another lane across the rivers, army corps engineers, snailfish, gopher turtles, it is going to be a struggle and a long-term process. You know the key thing about evacuation is? The key thing is do it early.
Oh, I agree, and I don't, I don't want another lane. I like, I'm, like I said, my family moved here because we like it.
Well, I want you to understand, to get another lane, it's going to cost a lot of money.
No, and that's what my concern is, most of us like how, we like where we live, which is why we live there.
You can call our office on Merritt Island. We'll give you the same reports he's, Commissioner Tobia has.
I appreciate that.
If you have any questions, call us. We're not, my office is not involved. We don't want to be involved, even though I've been accused of being involved. I don't want to be involved, can't vote, I want you to vote.
Well, that's why I'm here, too, because, like I said, misinformation is, I, I just want clarity.
I agree.
And so that I can, like you said, give it to my words and we can all understand.
Thank you. If you get ahold of us, we'll give you what we have, and after that.
Okay. Chair.
I, I have a question for you. I was just going to ask Florida today if they wouldn't mind doing a real good report on this for us, because we're definitely talking about it, and I think that'll help with getting the information out, and please don't read stuff online.
Well, and that's why I'm here today.
I don't believe half the stuff, and I'm telling you what, my mother never did any of that.
Yep.
So, so.
That's, that's why I'm here, because I'm reading a bunch of different.
Yeah, don't do that. So I'm, I'm, I, you're doing such a great job, so maybe if you get some of this out for them, it would be good. Thank you.
No, and I appreciate that. That's, I'm here today because I wanted to know what's going on. Thank you.
What one, Commissioner Felton?
Morris, I just want to take this opportunity to ask a quick question. Voter referendum, if it, if it actually gets that far in November general election, is it simple majority or is it sixty percent?
That one, I believe, will be a simple majority. I will, I will verify again, but I believe that's the case.
Any, okay, last but not least, Sandra Sullivan.
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. Whatever you do, don't read anything online, because you'll find out about it here, right? So what happened there? You know, I'm the watchdog that went back on the records on the minutes and put this out online, because y'all didn't let Merritt Island know. So let's talk about that. In 2012, the commission rescinded the vote for the feasibility study, and this vote, I've come up here twice in public comments in the last two meetings, and talked about public comments, right? I said, with the exception of emergency items, the board will take no action under public comment section, but can refer the matter to another meeting agenda or request a staff report. So at the last meeting, when I read this into the record, the county attorney said, oh, that was done under board reports. Well, there's the meeting, there's a screenshot of it. Do you see this? Public comments. You see who's speaking? Mrs. Oron, Susan Oron, and Mr. Yatch, when they came before you under public comments, so it would not be under an agenda. The people did not know about this. Now, let's go to that procedure document done by the county attorney, that very wonderful document that you refer to. He talks about Port St. John, how Port St. John voters were given the opportunity to vote whether they wanted a feasibility study. Given all the controversy in the past with Merritt Island, in 1988, they voted no, it was ran down their throat, you know. was ran down their throat, you know, Chuck Nelson was there when that vote was, he was commissioner when that was rescinded. Guess what? On my records request, on who is on the committee? Chuck Nelson is on that committee. He, of all people, knows how controversial this is to Merritt Island, and yet you did not give the courtesy to the people to put this on an agenda item with transparency to the people of Merritt Island. You all should be ashamed of yourselves.
Let's, let's.
Now, I'm going to move on to a couple other things. This is an attestation document signed by Frank Abate. The COC for the, for the State of Lagoon was presented for eight point two million, almost eight point three million dollars to do this, to do the Grand Canal project in Satellite Beach, and this was approved by the COC. So this came before you to vote for the State of Lagoon plan, and that was done on February seventh. On February twelfth, just five days later, the county manager files to the state for eighteen million dollars to get nine million dollars on a fifty-fifty funding. Now, that looks like bait and switch to me. Why, why would you deceive, why would the county deceive the COC and then turn around and for more than double that amount and go to the, go to the state for funding? I came to my district.
Sandra, thank you, appreciate the passion. Facts would be helpful, though.
I'd like to jump in, sir.
Commissioner Pritchett.
Yeah, you know, I typically don't like responding to much of this because if it just goes away, it's usually a little bad, or except it's causing so much confusion to our constituents, and so that concerns me. Just because you say something over and over and over doesn't make it true, and we seem to jump from topic to topic so many times. Now, if you've got something that needs to be maybe looked at, that we can make different decisions or tweak stuff, but, but constant attack on people's characters is just getting old. I work with a lot of good people, honest people, and, and, you know, there's, there's just a way to do things, and to just constantly stir things up and to take things that are truth and twist them and make them untrue just doesn't work for me. But I want to make one comment loud and clear, you know, do what you want to do, I don't care, but kids are off limits. I have people contacting me with a certain person starting to narrow in on people's kids and their relationships with other kids, and it's just going to quit. So I just want to say that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Pritchett, and if there's no final comments, I'm going to declare this meeting clo, sorry, sorry, I don't.
I apologize. If I may, BCSO, the Sheriff's Office participates in the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program through FDLE. Earlier in the meeting, during consent, you approved permission to advertise two specific grant awards. Also, generally, BCSO administers that grant locally, countywide, and does so under the umbrella of the Board of County Commissioners. The chair has been asked to execute a certificate of participation for FDLE. Because of the timing, you won't have enough, you won't have another meeting before this letter needs to go back to FDLE. It's something that the board does annually. It simply provides notification that the board will serve as the coordinating unit of government for the FDLE program. The sheriff handles administration of that program through their finance director, and if I could just get a motion of the board authorizing the chair to sign that certification on behalf of the board, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, with a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Anything else?
Thank you.
Richardson.
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, then, this meeting is adjourned at nine fifty.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program's sponsor and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program's sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.